All right, we will call the regular meeting of the City Council to order. Thank you guys for being flexible with us. It's past six, we're right on time. So this meeting is being held in the council chambers, which is open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the City Clerk's office least 24 hours prior to tonight's meeting were distributed to the City Council. Can I please have roll call again, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden. Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
All right, to start off, if you would please join me and stand, our invocation will be given tonight by Robert Faschetti, AKA The Fish, who's a chaplain. And then the Pledge of Allegiance will be led tonight by Bill Sluter.
As always, I count it a privilege and an honor to be able to pray for those that make hard decisions, sometimes not easy in any way, but I pray the wisdom of God. Father, I just thank you because your hand has been over this city and over our area for a very long time. I've seen you move in miraculous ways, and I've seen people's lives changed in an instant. Father, I pray every decision that's made here is made with wisdom, with grace, with honor, and with mercy, and that you would continue to bless the city of Yuba City and all those that are employed by it.
Join me for the pledge. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no reportable action taken in closed session.
How's that? Is that better? Gotcha. That's what happens when you give us a break. I forget those things. So my apologies. I asked for agenda modifications, there was none. I'll ask for the council's levity to change the order of our ceremonial presentations tonight in lieu of everything. So we will head directly into that. We are going to start with the second item, which is the retirement of Officer Troy Koski. And so I would like to invite Troy to join the council down front for this time. You know, tonight is one of those nights that, you know, it's really bittersweet. And because on the one hand, we're celebrating with you, and on the other hand, it's sad for us because we're going to lose you as a full-time officer. Before I get into the proclamation, there's a few things I want to say, and then I'll open it up to the council. But yeah, recently had the opportunity because you're my friend as well, you know, and I'm going to appreciate being your friend long after you get retirement. And I had the opportunity to go to your retirement the other night. The impact that I heard in that room goes so far beyond anything, I think, that any of us has ever seen. The legacy that you're leaving behind and the men and women of Yuba City, Marysville, Yuba County, did you work for Sutter County as well? And Sutter County. All these agencies, everyone got up and spoke about a Troy story. And it always ended kind of at the same thing. And it was, you know, it didn't matter what happened. I could call Troy, and Troy was there. And he not only would kind of calm the situation or whatnot, but you would learn from it, and you'd be ready for it the next time. And then Troy might show up and go, "Didn't I teach you that the last time?" you know? It was those types of things. So like I said, the impact to our community has been tremendous. So, you know, I'm just going to go ahead and pass this on to the rest of the council, see if they'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy, in the short time I've had the opportunity to get to know you and work alongside of you, I've been very impressed by what I've seen. You have a very gentle spirit, for lack of a better term, that it just puts people at ease. I think anybody who's ever worked alongside of you would agree with that. But just the love and the passion for your job. And your job is not an easy one at all. And most of the people in this room can attest to that. But thank you for doing it and doing it well. And enjoying, this is to congratulate you on your semi, your semi-retirement. But thank you for everything that you've done for our city.
All right, Troy. I only got to meet you a few months ago, but I enjoyed very much the ride-alongs. My whole purpose was to learn, and you taught me everything from the ground up as far as what being a homeless liaison means. And it really was a game of whack-a-mole we played both times that I went out with you. But I was really impressed by the grace that you offer these people who are downtrodden, but also seeing the whole situation as a logical one that, you know, we can attempt to address here in our city. But our conversations, probably over eight hours total, seven or eight hours, were about all sorts of things. But I learned you are a man of integrity, a man who loves your family and your job. So thank you so much. I'm sad to see you go, but you're not really going, I know. You're going to stick around. All right, congratulations.
Yeah, Troy, I've only worked with you in all of those meetings that we've been to together. I saw somebody who was very succinct, to the point, compassionate. I look forward to your insights you gave me when we were in any of our meetings together. And we're losing an asset, but maintaining an asset, which I'm very thankful for. And I hope all the best to you in your retirement, and enjoy it to the fullest because I recently did the same thing, but I never got away from it, and I'm still kind of employed. So I get it, and it's a good transition. And so the best to you, sir, and thank you for all your years of service.
Thank you. All right, now to kind of some of the formal stuff, and we're definitely not near done, so don't relax. We got a proclamation for you here tonight, and it's Troy Koski. Whereas Officer Troy Koski began his law enforcement career in 1990 as a reserve deputy with the Sutter County Sheriff's Department. Throughout your career, you have served honorably with the Sutter County Sheriff's Department, Yuba County Sheriff's Department, Marysville Police Department, where you attained the rank of sergeant, and finally, the Yuba City Police Department, where you joined our team in 2015. Officer Koski has held a variety of ancillary assignments, including school resource officer, cops unit member, firearms instructor, field training officer, motor officer, reserve officer coordinator, cadet coordinator, volunteer coordinator. You coordinate a lot of things, don't you? And notably became the Yuba City Police Department's first homeless liaison officer, which you have done an incredible job with that whole program. You have been the recipient of numerous commendations and accolades throughout your career, including three fitness ribbons, two unit of the year awards, Officer of the Year in 2021, and the Yuba City Police Department's Meritorious Service Medal. You've worked as a homeless liaison officer. Your work as the homeless liaison officer was done through compassion, community engagement, and a commitment to making a meaningful change for those in need, leaving a legacy of service that improved the lives of countless individuals. Officer Koski led with integrity, inspired those around him, and served as a mentor, team player, and motivator who's always put the needs of the community first. Officer Koski kept the faith with the public. He so honorably served for more than 35 years. And so therefore now it be resolved that I, Dave Shaw, the mayor of the city of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council, the citizens we serve, do hereby congratulate Officer Troy Koski on the occasion of his honorable retirement, June 19, 2025. We wish you and your family the very best in your retirement. And on that, I'd like to ask David and Isabel Morgan to come up and join us because they have a few more things they'd like to present to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my absolute pleasure to be here today, Mr. Koski. Thank you for your 35 years of service for not only the city of Yuba City, but our entire region. We appreciate the years of dedication, the hours that you've put in going above and beyond in the leadership skills you've put in for everybody here and committed to the different departments you've been a part of. So on behalf of Congressman Lamalfa, the people of the North State, congratulations. We wish you all the best in retirement, and thank you for your service.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Isabella Morgan. I'm with Assemblyman Gallagher's office. I'm also representing Senator Dolly's office as well as their representative couldn't make it tonight. But I do encourage the oohs and ahs when I unveil this because it's really pretty. But we just want to say congratulations to you, Officer Koski. Honestly, this is hot off the press. I really just got it from Sacramento. The assembly member was very keen to tell me that he was very happy that we did this for you. And his exact words was, "Troy is a good guy." And hearing the words that people use to describe you honor integrity, all of the roles that you've played in our community shows the heart that you have for not just the community, but the people in the community. And I just want to congratulate you on behalf of the senator and on behalf of the assembly member. Enjoy the retirement. I know people like you just can't get away from the work that they do because you love it. It really is a love of the people. And whenever you can, maybe play around a golf or something, go hunting or fishing. But congratulations, really. Thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you.
Kristi, before Troy speaks, would you like to get a picture first? Okay. So do you want all of these held up? Okay, there you go. Would you like to say a few words, sir?
Sure, I don't need the microphone.
Sure you do, they're going to hear you at home.
Okay. It has been a great honor to serve my community for 35 years. And kind of like we talked about it at my party, I couldn't have done this job without my wife. And being at home, taking care of the kids, because I preferred to work graveyard because that's where the criminals were, and that's when I liked to go out. And I did my best work there. Seventeen years on SWAT team, so there were those numerous endless call-outs, trainings that I had to go to. She was always there, making sure the kids got to where they needed to go and taking care of the home fort. So I appreciate all the people in this room and so many other people that I had the opportunity to work with through these 35 years. I learned from some of the best. I guess I kind of got lucky where I came in as kind of the old school was going out. I got to learn from some very great leaders that helped me craft my leadership style. And I appreciate all those people. So again, I'm going to stay hard time. I just can't give it up. So we'll see where we go from here.
Let's give him a round of applause again. There you go. Actually, in just a minute, Heidi, if you would like to come down and join Troy, you can come on down. I've got just a couple of last things I want to leave with you, and then we'll do as we've always done, if you'd like. And we'll bring your brothers and sisters in uniform down and get the photo and such. But if I can leave you with words of wisdom, because I know you're going to be out on your Harley. I know you're going to do that. There was a great American in history that said some key words, and I think you'll resonate with this. And it was the honorable Ricky Bobby. And he always said, and you can probably finish this, "If you're not first..."
You're last.
Exactly. And he always looked out for your protection. And he always would start prayers with little baby Jesus laying in a manger. Remember that?
Oh, yeah.
But the best part of this whole thing, and I think what a lot of people are going to miss, and I'm glad you're coming back, though, I talked to your partner, and there's one thing that always resonates. Troy, congratulations. And if you guys want to come down, and we'll get the photo.
Before that party breaks up, if I... Yeah, you know, I did, I wanted to wait till everybody was done, especially for Troy. I wanted to make sure I got the last word. So for those of you that don't know, Troy and I were in our 20s pushing around a patrol car on the other side of the river together. And I got to tell you, some greatest times of my life working with Troy and the other folks I got to work with during, back in the day. And running across him, you know, when I started here about three or four months ago, I didn't know what happened to him. I didn't know if he went on a backpacking mission across the world or what Troy was doing next, right? But I can tell you this, I've never met anybody with so much more integrity and such a tight family unit than Troy and his entire family and his wife Heidi. And I enjoyed working with Troy for all those years. And I gravitated toward, the first time I saw him when I started Yuba City, I saw this, and I didn't feel so bad. So, but now I know why you wear a ball cap. So I'm feeling pretty good about myself, Troy. But congratulations.
All right, let's give him another round of applause. Troy, congrats again. Thank you. Thanks, Heidi. Have a good one. All right. Good times. All right, let's go back to the first item on the agenda, which is Yuba-Sutter Transit Authority. And we have Matt Mock here as our executive director of transit. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Thank you very much. Tough act to follow, but again, thank you for the opportunity. Here tonight, basically to give you a quick snapshot of the current financial health of our local transit service. I know there's been a fair amount of discussion, both at the regional level and at the state level, about fiscal cliffs with respect to transit. And those problems are real. But thankfully, I think here locally, we're in a good, strong position, and I'm happy to report that's the case. So I have a few slides here to show, but with respect to your time, I'll keep it brief and try to leave some time for questions, if there are any. But before I start, just for those who aren't familiar in the audience, Yuba-Sutter Transit is the sole public transit provider for Yuba and Sutter Counties and the incorporated and unincorporated areas therein. We provide three primary types of public transit service: local fixed route service in the urbanized areas, commuter service to downtown Sacramento, and then demand response for those who need a little extra level of care in their travel. So, and structure-wise, I think it's important to understand Yuba-Sutter Transit Authority is a public entity, a standalone JPA. We are a small organization, six employees, including myself. We administer, oversee the program, ensure compliance, and manage the finances. But then all of the operations, the other 86 employees as of today, are with a private contractor. So we contract for all of the services from the general manager on down to all of the drivers, all of the mechanics, maintenance workers, and such. We are governed as a separate JPA by an eight-member board with two representatives from each of the four-member jurisdictions, the two counties and the two cities. And obviously, you're all intimately aware with how that works. So quickly, just to set the table for the financial discussion, a couple of main points here. We adopt a budget every year. Our fiscal year starts July 1. We are necessarily required to adopt a balanced budget. In other words, we don't really have a general fund or reserve funds, those kinds of things. We, in fact, most of our state funds, we can't claim a cent more than we can justify expenses for. And on the federal side, most of it is a reimbursement for expenses already incurred. Again, another strong aspect of our operations funding, we rely almost entirely on formula funding from both the federal and state levels. So these are formula funds that are allocated for transit specifically to this, to our service area and the jurisdictions. And they are done so primarily on a population basis. So in other words, not one-time or boutique funding or competitive funding sources. We rely on solid funding for our operations purposes. Again, although we are a separate JPA, we don't use any general funds from any of the member jurisdictions. Again, our expenses are almost entirely driven by the service on the street, pardon the pun. Eighty-seven percent of it goes to the contractor for the labor and the consumables of putting the bus service on the street and the costs of just kind of keeping the lights on and such. Another strong aspect on the revenue side, the Transportation Development Act, or TDA, that comes from the state for transit purposes back to the counties of origin. We currently, as it stands right now, utilize about half of those available funds. So in other words, we're sort of right-sizing the service, undersizing the service, and have funds to spare, at least from the state level, for funding our services. Another positive in our case, since the depths of the pandemic, steady increase in ridership. In fact, as of the close of the fiscal year, June 30, 75% ridership increase since the depths of the pandemic. Productivity is there. And along with that comes a fair revenue, which represents, as you'll see, about 10% of our revenue as well. And then again, I wanted to speak kind of to service initiatives and pilot programs. I think I was before the council about 18 months ago talking about all of the service initiatives that we were contemplating at that time through our short-range transit plan. I think it's important to note, as we recovered from the pandemic, our core services recovered ridership after the pandemic. We were conservative about how we actually went forward with some of these initiatives. And I think it's important from a management standpoint to recognize that we haven't exceeded our bounds. We focused on keeping our core services running and maybe backed off of some of the more grandiose plans in that process. So quickly, kind of gives you an idea. I put this up here to kind of illustrate, again, the reaction to COVID in terms of the major way we measure the amount of service that we put on the street as an agency is our vehicle service hours. And you'll see here, we're finishing up the current, the last fiscal year, June 30, having provided about 75,500 service hours, individual service vehicle hours to the public over the course of those 12 months. And you'll see that in the dip in fiscal year 2021, which was really the first full pandemic year, things have been relatively steady. So we kept services there. You'll see some inflationary pressures start to come in in '23 and '24. But again, from a financial aspect, from a management aspect, we kept our service levels, we dropped our service levels in response to COVID, first of all. So we're operating about 20% less service than we were going into COVID, and we've kept them there. And that's worked for us from a financial management aspect. So just quickly, on the expense side, as I mentioned before, the vast majority of the expenses are direct expenses for the operation. It's about the amount of service we put on the street, and the overhead is relatively low. You'll see most of it is direct payments to that operations contractor that I mentioned for labor. Then, of course, there's fuel. And then those other operating expenses that just kind of come with keeping the lights on. And then the administrative piece not only includes all of the administrative costs for the agency, for our public entity, but the insurance and things that we need to cover for that. So that's all-encompassing of sort of anything that could be considered really overhead at that point. And then on the revenue side, as I mentioned, heavily dependent, over half of our funding, at least in this fiscal year '26 budget that's represented here, is from that program I mentioned, the state, the TDA, from primarily local transportation funds and state transit assistance funds that make up that TDA funding. Again, a stable funding source comes back to the county for transit purposes. And then another 30% of federal funds, these are made up of formula funding, again, for both rural and urban services from the federal government. Then you'll notice that our fares represent about 11% of our revenue. That's a budgeted number at this point, but we expect to actually exceed that probably as that trend has been very positive. And then a small amount of other revenue sources. This is where we have some small local grants or state grants for particular programs. And then we also get some revenue from the ads on our buses, as a matter of fact. So just to kind of give you a sense, again, illustrate over the last, this is actually 12 years on this graphic, although I called it a 10-year operating budget history. You'll see, we've been kind of conservative. You'll see the dip in 2021 and kind of how we've increased just a little bit in terms of budget over those last four or five years. I'll notice the last two columns, they bump up a little bit, but those are budgeted numbers, and we expect to come under those. So again, a continuing trend. Conservative approach, a cash management approach. And I feel like we've come out in a pretty strong position as a result. So with that, I'd be happy to open up to any questions or to answer any things, but I hope that gives you a sense of kind of the financial stability and some confidence in our program going forward from a financial perspective.
Thank you, Matt. Before I take from the council and such, Councilmember Kirchner, you're still the chair of transit. Would you like to make a few comments?
I would. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Director, for that very concise presentation. And thank you for being available to do this. And not really a question, but more like a comment. Matt, you've had the position now for about a year or two?
Thursday will be my two-year anniversary.
Year anniversary.
Back with the agency, yeah.
Congratulations. And I would just like to state in public that Matt walked into a position where the director had had 40 years.
Roughly.
Yeah, and so I can only imagine what that would look like or feel like or be a little bit intimidated. But I will tell you, as one of the people that are on that board, that you absolutely have exceeded my expectations. And just being available when I have a question, that you're available. So thank you for all your work that you've done and you continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words. I appreciate that, yeah.
All right, Councilmember Cole, you're also on the transit. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I really would just echo what Wade said. I got to know you a little bit, I think, back in February when I came and took the tour, and you were very gracious. And so far, what I've seen is a whole lot of competency and hard work. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Pesquale, you have anything?
I've only sat in a few times, but I was always impressed with the fact that you always have an answer. You always have the right answers of any questions that I've ever seen that was been posed to you at any of the meetings that I've attended. So thank you for that, sir. And it is tough to follow somebody that was there 40 years. I can't even... I, I can't even imagine, so.
I, I call him once in a while, believe.
Oh, do you? Good. You're a smart man. That's a good thing. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the confidence and the support. Thank you.
Matt, I'll just close it out from the council's perspective. You know, I was on the, the board when we hired you, and I agree with the Chair's comments over here. You've definitely exceeded expectations from what we could even imagine then. I know that you were addressing the concerns, and just to dive in a little bit deeper, because it was brought up through, I think it came through Secog meeting or something about SAC Metro and things, we're facing some tough economic times. Keith did a fabulous job before you came on board and you've picked up with that, but the formula, you draw down the, the LTF from the local agencies, gets pulled back into yours, and you're still not taking 100% of the LTF funding that comes in. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And you continually come in under budget, and cash flow is good. We were nimble back in those days. You continue to be nimble and protect the community. So I just want to say very publicly, it don't matter what other agencies are doing, you're doing a hell of a job over there, Transit, in managing this, because you take a concept that should be more metro, and you apply it in the rural areas that we have, and you guys are doing a great job. We're on budget. There is still more headroom if it needs, because that LTF funding is available. We, that's yours to draw down on, and, but right now you let us keep some of that to put back into roads and stuff. So I just want to say thank you and let people rest assured, you're doing a great job, and our Transit Authority is not in any trouble.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay. Anything else you got for us, Matt?
Nope. Again, appreciate the opportunity and the support of the Board and the Council, and happy to come talk about these issues at any time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Bendorf, do you have anything on that one?
I just had, just a quick question from Matt. I'm sorry to drag you back up there again. Just my years in, in working with Ubisoft Transit, great organization, and, and thanks for carrying the, the efforts forward. So rural environment versus metropolitan environment, more urban, are we seeing the same type of statistics with, as far as percent of ridership of population as we are in like the more urban centers? And the reason I ask that, when you look at what the funding sources are that are made up of Ubisoft Transit, it, it appears that a majority of it is federal and state funds, right? And the rider share component makes up how much of a percentage of the rider fare?
In terms of revenue, 10, 10 to 11%, roughly is where it's been trending.
Is that pretty standard with other transit agencies, like around 10 to 11% come from, you know, fare-paying customers and the other is amount of subsidies? Is that pretty standard?
I, I appreciate the question, yeah. In, in a rural setting, certainly, yeah, or semi-rural setting, that's the, the case. Some of the, the more urban areas are more dependent on fare revenue, for instance, and that's, that's one of the reasons for the quote fiscal cliff. Bay Area transit operators, for instance, BART in particular, very dependent on fare going forward, and, and that's, and they've been hurt tremendously by, by a slow recovery from the pandemic. I, I would say nationwide, we're, we're trending about where most of transit is in the United States. We're at about 65 to 70% of pre-COVID, right? In terms of ridership, right? Which, you know, that sounds, sounds bad. In our case, we're only operating about 80% of the service hours that we were pre-COVID too, right? So we've been able to kind of, I appreciate the word nimble. I think that's, that's important in a small organization like us. I, I kind of liken it to a, a tugboat as opposed to a cruise ship, right? The cruise ships are having a hard time turning around, and we've been able to kind of maneuver the waters a little bit quicker, a little bit lower drag, so to speak, right? And then, and I think we benefit from that. It's important, I think, that, that local, close control is, is beneficial to a system like ours.
Thanks a lot, Matt.
Yep, appreciate it.
Anything else from the council? Matt, thank you again for being here, and thanks for the great job you and your team are doing. Really appreciate it. All right. We're going to move right along to item three, public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on tonight's agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to tonight's meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any public comment tonight? Do we have any public comment tonight? Hearing none, we're going to pull it back and move right along with our agenda. We're moving to the consent calendars, item four and five. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted to one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the council request specific items be discussed or removed from consent calendar for individual action. Are there any public comments on consent calendar items four and five? Any comments from the public on items four and five? Hearing none, I bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make motion to take action on consent calendar items four and five.
Have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Moving right along to our first business item, which is Ready Rebound. And Shaleen and Robert, you guys have the floor.
Try that again. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Robert Bendorf, interim city manager. Thanks for allowing us to present to you tonight. I'm just going to make some quick introductions. You'll hear from me here in another second or two, but I wanted to introduce Shaleen Loza from Human Resources, who did some really heavy lifting on this item once we got it going. And I'd also want to introduce, he's in the audience tonight, representing Ready Rebound, Eric Earhart. So he is here as well. So first you'll hear from Shaleen about the program, and something we're really excited to present to the council, and you'll see me in a minute.
All right. Here's some background on why we decided to explore Ready Rebound for first, for first responders. As you know, first responders face significant physical, mental demands in the course of the duty. Supporting their long-term wellness is critical. Additionally, there's a lack of treating physicians who accept workers' compensation in the Ubisoft area, which has made it very challenging for first responders to receive timely and quality care. Ready Rebound is an organization specializing in providing structured support to first responders recovering from an industrial or non-industrial injury. This is a voluntary benefit that would be available to employees, their dependents, and retirees. If an individual decides to utilize this benefit, they will call the Ready Rebound hotline to speak with a certified personal trainer to begin to receive healthcare navigation Ready Rebound helps first responders return to duty on an average of nine to 12 weeks faster than the traditional recovery process. Now, I'll go ahead and turn the presentation over to Robert, who will discuss the fiscal impact.
So the contract total with Ready Rebound, should your council approve it, is about $184,000 over a period of three years, and you can do the math, a little over $60,000 each year. But when we look at not just the cost of the contract, but trying something a little bit different, I know the numbers are important. We're in tough fiscal times, et cetera. However, a program like this, its first focus is on our employees. And I would tell you, I can quantify things all day long, and I can also qualify them. This certainly qualifies it. But our first responders, you'll see some numbers here in a minute indicating the workers' compensation claims that come from their jobs, which are usually higher in numbers as far as workers' comp claims go than any other positions within the city. So this really looks out for our employees in making sure, hopefully, they get healthier, quicker, back to work. It benefits them, their mental health, their families, and also their families here at Ubisoft. So when we took a look at some of the numbers of what the overtime budgets were for the different departments, as you can see here, for the fire department, it's about a $1.9 million budget, roughly. And police department, roughly around $1.2-ish million for their overtime budget. But you can see the percentages there. Of those overtime budgets, how much of that is directly attributed to those that are off on leave for workers' comp, suffer some type of injury, and they're out quite a while? So if you just take fire department, for instance, and let's just round it up to 30%. And Dave, what's 30% of 1.9 million? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. So that's a big number, right? And if you look at the same, roughly about 36% for patrol and 28% for dispatch, you add what the percentage numbers are of those total overtime budgets, and you're talking very real dollars to the city. But again, it's something that we looked at, it's very important, we want to be able to save money, but more importantly, we want to take care of our employees and make sure they're healthy and that they have the care and treatment that they deserve. And that's what Ready Rebound does. Ready Rebound provides that concierge service, and in our discussions, HR, along with Gina and Shaleen and the police department and fire departments, we really got down into some detail where we couldn't, not to say anything bad about our third-party administrators or anything, but a workers' comp across the state of California is broken. We all know that. And to get folks in quicker, so they can be healed faster and not have any lingering problems, definitely makes it right, or the right feel anyway. And as we talked with our employees, it was very rare to find somebody that said they had a great experience with workers' compensation. It's just the way it rolls these days. So that's some of the revenue on, or some of the expenses that we incur for overtime. And if we can just save a fraction of that, just a small fraction, which you think, we think that the savings will be greater, then it's definitely worth it, not to mention the other benefits. So here's an idea of what we looked at as far as data goes, and you all know me, you can't manage what you can't measure, right? So this is some of our measurement. Total in the last five years, 108 workers' comp claims for fire and police. I would tell you that's not out of the norm, and I imagine our police chief would agree with me. It is an ongoing type battle that they face. And again, it's just the nature of the jobs that police and fire do. But the average of the total paid out over the five years, roughly about $22,000 average. But the average of the total incurred costs for that claim, about $38,000 average. And then the column that gets me, look at the average number of days that those cases are open. 248 days. And we can do better. We can do better for our employees, we can do better for the residents of Ubisoft, and our entire organization, if we had something that speeded up that process a little bit better. And then you look at the total incurred costs, and that just speaks volumes itself. But ultimately, what we are looking forward to is coming forward with a solution that may work. I can't promise, and I can't guarantee you anything that it's going to work, but we have to try something a little bit different. Other agencies across the state of California are joining up with Ready Rebound. The history is pretty phenomenal, and I think it's beneficial to hear, and Eric can correct me if I'm wrong, but Ready Rebound was started by a gentleman by the name of Luis. Luis was a trainer with the Milwaukee Brewers. And he got a phone call from a fire chief saying, hey, I've got this employee, I'm pretty sure blew out his knee or his ankle or whatever it was, and can you see him? Because the workers' comp thing is taking way too long. Can you just take a quick look at him? He did. He said, yeah, you're right, blew out his knee, and I'm going to get him in to see somebody tomorrow. And not only did he get him in to see a sports medicine doctor tomorrow, but soon after that, he was scheduled for surgery. So this happened a couple, three times with this fire chief, till ultimately, the fire chief came back to Luis and said, you know, you need to start a business. Everybody's loving it, and you are saving my overtime budget. I think it was through all the cases, near to a half a million, a half a million dollars, Eric, is that correct? That he had saved by getting these folks seen quicker, healthier, faster, and back on a truck or back in a patrol car, whatever it may be. And if you take, for those of you that watch sports, and when an athlete goes down, they run out there, the doctor, the trainer, whomever, they evaluate, they take them to the tunnel, x-rays, MRI, either that night or the next day, and then a course of treatment is almost immediate. And if we're doing that for our athletes, why not do that for first responders? To me, it makes a lot of sense. We can hopefully save some money, but more importantly, take care of our employees. Again, it's optional for them to make that call to Ready Rebound and get a concierge, but once they do make that call to speed things up a little bit, they're with that same advisor the whole time, through doctor's appointments, surgery appointments. They'll even call you 45 minutes and expect to call if one of our police officers or firefighters get injured. After you get done with the doctor appointment, they'll call you. Actually, the way Eric explained it to me is a little bit scary, but they give you enough time, and they call you when you're doing your doctor's appointment, almost on, on, on time of that, the ending of that appointment. And they'll say, hey, what happened? Follow up with next steps? What can we do for you next? They'll get them into physicians that they're familiar with, though sports medicine is the focus, and they have those connections all throughout the Sacramento region statewide and also nationwide. One of the big organizations that they just signed a contract with a few months ago, I know I'm probably generally speaking timeline accuracy, but with CAL FIRE. CAL FIRE is now contracted with Ready Rebound, as well as numerous other agencies, to try this out, see how we can do better. So anyway, we're hopeful that tonight you're, will adopt the resolution authorizing me to execute the agreement for Ready Rebound for our first responders. And I really wanted to give a special thank you to Chief Runyon, Chief Hubbard, Chief Alexander, even though he's not here, and Gina and Shaleen from Human Resources. Everybody put in a lot of effort into this to see if it was viable and worthy enough to bring to your council for consideration. And so I would welcome any comments that Eric may have, or Shaleen, you have anything that you want to add, or Chief Runyon, for that matter. So.
Good evening. Eric Earhart with Ready Rebound. Just want to say thank you for taking the time to consider us, consider this. You know, coming from somebody who's in local government for many, many years, who has been through the work comp system, I can tell you, if your board approves this resolution, you're going to make such a meaningful impact on the lives of the men and women that serve this community, ensuring that they have the ability to stay on their chosen life path. It can have a tremendous impact. I, I've seen it work. It's, it's been fantastic watching this, as I've been with Ready Rebound, and knowing that the change and the impact we can have on those folks' lives, making sure that they can stand up here, just like the gentleman earlier, and get that award for 30-plus years of service. So thank you for your time today, and we look forward to working with you and the community.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'll just add to it that, you know, any given time, I, I think right now I've got five or six, I hate to say it, I lose track sometimes of how many people I've got on, on entries. But in particular, you know, I've got one that's been a couple of years now, and I have three employees right now that I know could have used this and made this process because you, you're with them every step of the way, and the frustrations of the system. And it's, again, it's not anyone's fault in this room, it's just the system, and it is very difficult. So we're hoping, you know, if we could reduce those in half, that, that alone is a huge benefit to us. Again, just getting our people back on the street and the frustrations of not getting the care they need, so thank you.
Mr. Bendorf, is it back to us now?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there any questions from the council? Any questions? Okay. Eric, please don't go sit down, I have a few questions myself. The first question I have is to Chief Runyon's point. You know, I know that we have spent an awful lot in overtime and stuff because of having to cover people who's been out for an extended, long period of time. If we went into this... If we went into this, would, would you step in with Ready Rebound and start assisting those people that are struggling through their current workman's comp, or are they just kind of out there on the other side still?
No, absolutely. So what we do is initially we'll work with the county, the county team, I'm sorry, the city team, as well as your third-party administrator. Make sure all stakeholders are involved in the conversation to really get everything implemented and integrate with your current workflows, right? Your current process. We don't change your policies. We just integrate with those. But yes, the service is available to all members, whether it's on duty, off duty. Doesn't matter if the injury occurs next week or if it occurred two years ago. We are here to help those members, help their families, help your retirees as well if they have any work related or even private, if they get injured off duty or their family member, their son is out playing baseball, tears a shoulder, we're here to help them as well.
Okay. And then the, the one piece that's missing for me on this thus far is I know we're covering the service as a city, but if they go to your doctor and you get them in, is it just normal insurance and whatever would normally happen? Is it like workman's comp or workman's comp's covering it? What's the impact financially to our team members?
There is no impact to them at all. The service is, we, we comp that service to your members, and so there is no additional cost. So it's just their standard insurance, their private insurance, private pay insurance, as they would if, if they weren't using Ready Rebound. We just have the ability to get them into those specialists much quicker.
Okay. My last question, because I'm very familiar with the athletic type, you know, structure. My daughter got injured when she was in college, and it's exactly like you talked. Within 45 minutes of the injury, their surgeon had already reset her ankle and leg, and she had surgery four days later, I think, three days later. And he was actually a surgeon for the U.S. ski team. So, you know, having that access, we don't have, you know, surgeons that are on the U.S. ski team here in Yuba City. So if our members need that, where are they going? Are they going to get to see someone local? Are they going to Sacramento, San Francisco? What's happening?
Yeah, so typically, as we go through implementation, we'll learn where all of your, your employees live, right? So we want to find out, because with law enforcement, most of them are going to live local. With your fire service, we see people living in other counties and sometimes even other states. And so then we go out and we find providers in that area that are sports fellowship-trained. So they understand the importance of that quick time to diagnosis and treatment. So we go out and build partnerships with those individuals. We've already got a very large group of partners within the state because of the CAL FIRE contract, as well as other customers throughout the state. But that's an ever-evolving list. We continue to build those partnerships and modify them and make changes to make sure that we have the top-quality doctors. One, obviously, they have to, they have to be able to take work comp or if they're private pay insurance, that works as well. But for those on-duty related injuries, they need to take work comp, and they also have to understand the value and have that sports background. Most of them have worked with either local sports teams, collegiate, or professional sports teams.
Okay. Promise this is the last question, but how much do you typically shorten the, the workman's comp period of an employee? Like, you know, we talked, things the chief said you've had, it's been going on for two years. You know, what's a typical? You try to, I mean, injuries are all different, but do you cut their time in half basically to get them well and everything? Or is it, what's the stats say?
Great question. So nationwide, with all of our customers, we see about a 30% to 40% reduction in time. So about, let's say, if you have somebody who's typically would be out for a year, we usually get them back about three to four months quicker.
Okay.
So quite a bit of time, right? And again, by getting that quick time to, to diagnosis and treatment, their recovery is much better also. So those, those long-term issues that they're going to have to deal with or the extent of that claim, when you look at some of the days that were presented up there, we see those begin to shrink.
Okay, thank you. I, I think it's a great program. Seeing it from the sports medicine side, if that's what we're implementing, it's, it's phenomenal. Any other questions from the council? And we'll see if there's any comments from the public concerning this. Any comments from the public? Then let's bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to finalize and execute an agreement with Ready Rebound for first responders.
Have a motion. I'll second it. So have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Eric, we're looking forward to working with you guys and getting our men and women all healthy. Thank you. All right, let's move on to Agenda Item 7, which is salary schedule changes. Ms. Gina, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Gina Roland, interim human resources director. So this item recommends three changes that will assist city departments in best meeting its business needs. First, the police department is requesting a change to the salary schedule for reserve police officer level 1A. This will make the salary range for that position align with the salary range for police officer. Level 1 reserve police officers have the same training and post-certification, powers, and duties of our full-time sworn police officers. This change would encourage more qualified candidates to apply to be level 1 reserve police officers and provide support for our full-time officers by assisting with patrol, helping in the event of emergency situations, and providing support during special events. Staff is also recommending to change the title of the part-time police officer trainee to police cadet. Next, human resources reallocated an existing analyst position to an administrative assistant during this year's budget process. This action created salary savings and also aligned the department's positions with the staffing needs of our department. Before we can fill the position, it's necessary to create an administrative assistant salary range on the confidential bargaining unit salary schedule, since this position will be privy to and provide support to HR leadership during the collective bargaining process. Lastly, the finance and human resources departments have evaluated the accountant classification series and are recommending a new accountant 1, 2, non-supervisory class assigned to the local 1 bargaining unit and a senior accountant supervisory class assigned to the local 1, oh, no, I'm sorry, and a senior accountant supervisory and advanced journey level class assigned to the first-level managers bargaining unit. This will provide a career ladder into the professional accounting job series for existing city employees, and the senior accountant title will allow the classification and its advanced journey level duties to be better expressed to potential applicants. The recommendation requires an update to the salary schedule for the accountant 1, accountant 2, and senior accountant titles. Additionally, with this action, the two incumbent accountant employee, accountant 1 employees and the local 1 bargaining unit will be reclassified to accountant 2 with this change. It's a title change only, no change to the employees' existing salary or bargaining unit. Staff recommends the council adopt a resolution authorizing the finance director to amend the salary schedule for reserve police officer from the part-time, extra-help, limited-term, and at-will-contract employees. Add administrative assistant to the confidential bargaining unit. Amend accountant 1 and 2 to the local 1 bargaining unit and add senior accountant to the first-level managers bargaining unit. There's no fiscal impact resulting from the changes to the confidential administrative assistant or the accountant class series. And any increased costs for reserve police officers will be absorbed within the police department's existing extra-help budget and/or offset by salary savings. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Gina. Any questions from the council? I just want to say before we go to public, thank you for answering that because that was exactly going to be my question there at the end. We're operating basically under zero budget accounting, and we're net zero, so that's a good thing.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, is there any comments from the public on this item? Any comments from the public? Bringing it back to council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I take action on Item 7, salary schedule changes as per recommendation.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Gina. All right, we're moving right along to Agenda Item 8. 8, 9, 10, and 11 are all going to seem very familiar because they're all the same thing. Mr. Wolf, welcome to your new position and welcome to the podium tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Through the mayor, before we get started.
I'm almost there.
Okay, sorry.
Oh. Before we get into recusals and what we're going to do, Mr. Wolf, if it is fine with you, all of these next public hearings are all routine. We do them every year, and there's nothing that's out of the ordinary. If people have questions, we can address those. But unless the council objects, I'm good with a summary presentation tonight on all of these, okay? Mr. Chaffin, would you talk about our recusals tonight?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. We have one recusal for Councilmember Pasquale, who has property within the, the district area also, although he's not here. Council, our vice mayor, Boomgarden, would also have a recusal. And just for the benefit of the public, when there's a recusal on these items, the council member will need to get up and move to the back room. So you're going to see some shuffling of chairs because they're not allowed to participate in the process. It's not because they don't care about it, it's because they want to make sure that there's absolutely no interference and everything is above the board because of being very transparent. And just for the record, for Items Number 8 through 10, there were no items received by the city clerk in writing regarding those matters. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wolf, we'll take that summary presentation if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, I'm here to present on landscape district, landscape maintenance district number 1, lighting and landscape maintenance districts numbers 2 through 6, and residential streetlight maintenance districts, Terrebonne area and Walton Avenue area. So as you mentioned, this is a routine item that we complete every year. It's for the annual levy of lighting and landscape maintenance districts and residential streetlight maintenance districts. These districts are put in place to cover costs for lighting, landscaping, and related items such as block walls, or in the case of residential streetlight maintenance districts, the operation of streetlights that are owned by PG&E. Now, we go through this annual levy process in order to be able to raise the rates to keep up with inflation and as well to have operating, operation and maintenance budgets available throughout the year. In general, most districts are being increased within their allowed levy amount, or their allowed maximum levy amount, which is based on the cost of living adjustment each year from January to January. Some of the districts, we did decrease the dollar amounts just due to adequate funding and wanting to make sure that we don't have too high of reserves. We want to have an adequate level of reserves just to cover costs as needed. We don't necessarily want to bank them at a higher amount. And then there are a few districts as well that are staying at the same exact dollar amount as previous years. That being said, all changes are within the allowed maximum levy amounts. And with that, our recommendation is to hold a public hearing and then to adopt the budgets for fiscal year '25, '26 for landscape maintenance district number 1, lighting and landscape districts numbers 2 through 6, and residential streetlight maintenance districts. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. We're going to take them as they're identified in the agenda. So we're do landscape maintenance district 1, I think, for public. If we can have the slide that shows what the new rates are going to be would be great because that's really in the nuts and bolts of it. Yeah, that's what we're looking at with the physical impacts, okay? Is there any questions from the council? Okay, hearing none. The public hearing of the Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District Number 1 is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any public comments at this public hearing on landscape district 1? Have any public comments on landscape district 1? Okay, hearing no comments. I'm closing the public hearing and I'm bringing this back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year '25, '26 for the City of Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District Number 1 present to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Could we get Councilmember Pasquale back out? And then, Mr. Wolf, as we go through the next one, we'll kind of follow the same thing. As we get to Item 9, that one, we're going to have to do a little maneuvering because I have to recuse myself because I have property within landscape districts 2 through 4. And in following succession, Mike, I didn't talk to you about this earlier, but you're the, since the vice mayor's not here, you're in line to be mayor after him. And I will recuse myself. Good, Mr. Chaffin?
We are good, and the recusal is based on property within the levy area. Thank you.
All right. Let's see here. Do we have a public hearing? I guess we have the presentation by Josh at this point, right? Oh, we did all of them at once? Oh, okay, great. No, he was out of the room. Public hearing. Do we open this up for public hearing for Item Number 9?
And Chair, would you like to hit the gavel just for fun? There we go. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a public hearing? Any, anyone wanting to speak on this, Item Number 9? No comments? Close it, public. Okay, so do I have a motion to, on Item Number 9?
Through the mayor? Through Mike? Through the chair? Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year '25, '26 for the Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District numbers 2, 3, and 4.
Okay. Okay, I have a first and a second. Do I have those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Hit the gavel again. Okay, we need to go get the mayor.
Move on to Agenda Item 10, which is landscape lighting districts numbers 5 through 6. And you've already got that up there. Is there any questions from the council thus far? We continue on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think we have one recusal for our Councilmember Pasquale, who lives in the area or has property in the area. Thank you.
I hope he lives in the area, he's on the council. All right. With that, the public hearing for Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance Districts Number 5 through 6 is now open. If there are any members of the public who'd like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment. State your name and address for the record. Do we have any public comments on this item, which is landscape districts number 5 through 6? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing it back to council for action.
The mayor?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 2025, 2026 for the Yuba City Lighting and Maintenance District numbers 5 and 6 present to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. We could get Councilmember Pasquale. And then we will go to Agenda Item 11. And, Mr. Wolf, if you want to give the, because this does not have a district to it, if you want to give us a quick summary of why this is a separate item and none of us have to recuse ourselves, it'd be great.
Sure. So this is, this item is to cover the residential streetlight maintenance districts, which cover the Terrebonne areas and Walton Avenue area in town. These areas are not lighting and landscape districts. These areas are specifically for residential streetlights. In these areas, the city does not own the lights, but they do own or maintain the lights, but they do pay for the operating costs to keep the lights in operation or keep the streets lit up at night. Just a little bit of background, the city, these residential streetlight maintenance districts were created when the areas developed under county jurisdiction. When the city annexed these areas, the, the city also annexed the residential streetlight maintenance districts. As such, when they were formed, both of these districts did not have cost of living adjustments. So from year to year, we aren't able to adjust them above the rates that they were originally formed with. With that, we have two areas, Walton Avenue, Terrebonne area. Terrebonne area has sufficient funding. Terrebonna area has sufficient funding. Walton area does not have sufficient funding. We, and we don't really have the ability to reduce services like we would in the landscape lighting maintenance district. We just tried to reduce admin time or anything to try to keep it as low as possible, the costs. And we've done some audits in the past on our financial system to see if there were any discrepancies. We couldn't find anything there. Our engineering department now is doing a physical audit of lights to compare to PG&E rates to see if the numbers actually do add up or if there's a billing error. With that, we'd like to conduct a public hearing and then adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 25, '26 for the Yuba City Residential Streetlight Maintenance Districts.
Perfect. Any questions from the council before we go to the public hearing? Okay, hearing none. The public hearing for the Yuba City Residential Streetlight Maintenance Districts is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment. State your name and address for the record. Is there any public comments under this public hearing? Any public comments under this hearing? Hearing none, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 25, '26 within Yuba City Residential Streetlight Maintenance District Number 1, Terrebonna, and residential streetlight district, streetlight maintenance district Number 1, Walton area.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Mr. Wolf, congratulations on your first presentation as our director.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
All right.
It's going to be more fun.
And thanks for being flexible because I didn't tell you that beforehand. So, Agenda Item 12, anything in the future that the council would like to come back before the council and be discussed? Okay. Hearing none, we're going to move to reports. City manager, you're up first.
Nothing to report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council reports. Councilmember Cole.
I don't have anything really except for, just wanted to talk about the 4th of July parade with fire. It was really nice to see some of those guys out with their families. We have a very young fire department. And so, to see them with their families is really great. And as with everyone else who was there, it was a good turnout and a lot of fun.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with the regional water agency. The bulk of the meeting dealt with informational strategic plan. It was a panel discussion, the Foothill Water Agency, so it really didn't involve us, our community. Moving along to Gilser, a very brief meeting, but there was an adoption of the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. And then lastly, with the mosquito vector, we did a final budget approval for fiscal year 25, '26. Some memberships that we renewed. Of course, you probably noticed there's, the mosquito population's on the uptick. That's normal for this time of year. And then I'd just like to echo what Councilmember Cole said about the parade this year. It was attended very well because we had this amazing weather. And boy, oh, boy, folks showed up en masse. And every year, it amazes me because I always see people out there that it's the first time they've heard about it. But that's good because we're getting the word out. And I would like to thank the mayor for taking the, taking a moment prior to the parade starting to take a moment, for a moment of silence for those individuals that lost their lives just a few days prior in the tragedy in Espardo. So, thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have anything to report on any actions or meetings that I attended.